And however you see it, whoever sees it, I need a motion to accept the minutes as presented or be amend them.
Tony, I have a question.
Yes.
You refer to the VFW as building to a convalescent center?
Convalescent center. That's the way I understand it.
That is what you're considering? I didn't think so.
Oh, I apologize then.
Okay, so in my perspective, this is going to be a family homeless shelter. Thank you.
Give that to me again, please. That would be.
It's a homeless shelter for families.
Okay.
Recovery.
Recovery center, not a convalescent center, a recovery center?
Yeah, I was about that last night. It seemed to me that people would ask, or whatever.
Elderly.
Yeah.
Chairman, the actual application was submitted as a family recovery center. All right, thank you. I stand corrected and we'll put them in the minutes, not these, but the minutes coming out of this meeting. Any other comments concerning the minutes? Yes, Michelle.
Wasn't the last time, the time I made a motion, we don't put that in here? The motion for publication of.
Publication of.
Our meetings when they're upcoming.
Was there a second to that motion?
There was, we voted on it.
And what was the motion, please? Um.
To to publicize the meeting ahead of time in the newspaper, the local.
Okay, and we we do. I think I remember that discussion.
It's not in there this week.
Uh, it was in, yes, it is. It's it's in this week's paper.
Is it?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
But your your point was relative to the motion being made second. And if I'm not mistaken, the motion was not.
We voted on it.
Yes, but it was the motion.
That's correct. Was it what?
I'm sorry?
Didn't pass.
No, we only put it in passed.
Uh, no, no, what what happened is that I relied on the reporting and unfortunately, the information was lost because I didn't get a recording. But I took things from.
Okay.
My scribbled notes and that wasn't one of them.
Okay.
But that too, we may amended uh uh minutes from.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments concerning the minutes?
I have read the minutes and I find them to be complete. And I make a motion that we accept the minutes with the amended.
All right, there are seconds to that. A second by Michelle. Okay, a motion made by Avren to accept the minutes as amended. Michelle's second. Any discussion on the motion? None. Those in favor of the motion? Uh, I'm sorry, Megan, I should have mentioned, you will be a voting member because of the absence of regular members. So please participate. Uh, accepted, uh, the most, the minutes were accepted. All right, thank you. Let's move on.
One exception.
Oh. Oh, I'm not looking far enough down.
He was apparently on the B's. Look at the tan.
One one abstention and others accepted the minutes as present as amended. Uh, what I like to do is move into the presentation of information. Uh, Mr. Sino, I spoke to him already. Uh, he gave us presentation, a presentation on the eighth. And with members of the public here, things not to be repeated necessarily, but to make sure that we answer questions that the public might have. And we might also have in relation to something that we got to ask. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. My name is Jeff Asito. I am the Senior Civil Engineer for SMRT Architects and Engineers of Bangor. Uh, joining us this evening, we are, this evening, we're here to this, uh, for a public hearing and to continue conversation on the site application for the Wabanaki Public Health, well, Welfare Recovery Home, which is the title of the application. And that is the purpose. We'll explain more. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to do a brief presentation for the public prior to the public hearing. I'll do a general overview just to the details of the project to see if I can answer some questions ahead of time. Or any new wash on for a slide, please. Also joining me this evening is Lisa Saka Basin, who is the co-CEO of Wabnaki Public Health and Wellness. And also Tom Martin, who's the Director of Facilities. And also join us this evening is Civil Engineer Emily Sprecker from SMRT as well. It's a system in the application. Slide please. And slide. The property concern with this project is known as, for the record, Texmac View four lot seventy-three, better known as forty Oxford Street. Just for reference, here's the Molokot Stream, the Grant Street School. Here's Plom Scott Avenue coming down, Tyson Kattan. Here's Elm Street. This is Oxford. And it's founded by Elm and by Oak. The parcel is roughly in the middle of the block right here. And that green line is a rough representation of the actual limits of the property line. Yes, miss.
I'm sorry, can you show me where the the mill is on that? Or is the old mill?
Yes, the um, these are the railroad tracks. The old mill proportionally is here, staying this way. And also the section on the other side of the river is over here. Yes, of course.
Just trying to get it in perspective.
I probably should have shifted up a little bit. So sure enough. Um, the, this is a residential neighborhood, as I think most folks are aware, runs along the stream running north. A lot of lots are between mostly a tenth of an acre. Some of them are up to about a quarter of an acre. This parcel is just over one point, one acre, about one point oh nine, or about forty-seven thousand square feet. But this is the largest parcel in the area. And I'm showing this for perspective to show that it's a forty-eight hundred square foot building, but it's also in the middle of a large one acre parcel. And it barely covers ten percent of the site area that is. That is the existing building. Uh, somebody may be familiar, the rear half of this was a school at one point. And then later there's another addition put on, and it was the most used, recently used, uh, for the chapters of VFW before, better said, forum wars. Now slide please. Uh, we were just over at the site, and this is substantially what the building on the site looks like now. Um, it's a plastic sided building with a pitched roof. Uh, there's a large expansive pavement around the front of the building. There is a main entrance in the front. And the entrance on this side, and also entrance on the other side, actually two sides on this side. Um, the property is characterized by this bank along the back of it that extends up almost thirty feet in elevation. And that's all wooded back there as you can see. And that screens to the homes on the next street over. A slide please. This is standing on the, what's called the south side, looking left up the up the street, Oxford Street. So here's the parcel to the left, here's the building. You can see there's a a long, what's known in the business as a curb cut. Basically, there's no control for entering the site, coming back again. It's almost two hundred feet long there. So this whole parking lot was never, uh, let's just say it was an informal lot, was never well designed, it was never intended for design. And um, I wasn't here when VFW chapter was in in service, but I'm sure the check parking was probably haphazard at best during a larger event. Um, slide please. And this is going to the other side of the parcel, looking back. And you can see this is the property line right about here, some existing fruit trees that are intended to stay, that are on the, uh, they're on the VFW parcel. And also across the street to the east, this area is all wooded, buffered to the railroad tracks and beyond to the next neighborhood over. Slide please. And slide please. This is the site plan for the project. I'm going to zoom in a little bit because this is awfully a bigger scale. It's hard to see this. But the, uh, in general, slide please. This is the existing conditions plan. The building is this dark shape right here. The existing pavement is the light gray shared shading all the way along through here. And where you don't see shading, this is lawn here, here. And then this is a tree line right here, a little bubbly line. This area is all wooded going up that bank. And these are topography lines. You can see the the relief going up. These are one foot contours all the way up to the top of the bank here. This is the property line here, the heavy dash dash long dash comes down along here. And then a property line here. There are two direct the butters here, number twenty-six. And then also, uh, this property, which is actually identified off of Elm Street. Slide please. This is the proposed layout for the site. The building will substantially remain the same. In fact, the the actual foundation will stay the same. The only additions to the building is the front porch is being modified to be a bit larger to allow people to come out and meet on the porch and and as any family would. The pavement has been substantially changed, though. We're going to create two distinct entrances, one here and one here off of Oxford Street. They loop around and they'll serve fifteen parking spaces. They're numbered one through fifteen, of which two of those are ADA accommodated. This building was never ADA accommodated and will be a part of the project. There is a sidewalk along the front for the parking. There's a sidewalk here to the rear entrance here. There's a sidewalk here, which will be the ADA route to this rear entrance. And this is the entrance we're going to modify into an ADA ramp here, and that will be the ADA accommodate entrance to the back of the building. This layout encompasses a number of things. First of all, it controls the traffic coming to and from Oxford Street. Secondly, we have created this with emergency services and your ambulances, your fire trucks can all make the move into this and deploy appropriately. I would expect if someone had to be taken out of the building just for an actual emergency or something, they would come out this ramp and down and around. And once crew thought that was a very good thing. Um, this also provides, for the first time, I think, a continued sidewalk. You may have noticed it was an existing side here and here. And what we're offering in the layout is to put a four foot paved sidewalk all the way along through here, along with a green esplanade on the right and also left. Going to add five fruit trees for frontage here, basically put some green space where there's never been any, to try to break that up. So there's a big sea of pavement, if I could use that phrase, is going to be gone. And this will look far more residential, which is what we believe the use will be, and I'll address that in just a second. Um, there's some other utilities here on the drawing as well, but that's it. Basically, the building stays the same. The front porch becomes a bit larger and we're going to modify the parking layout, uh, too. I do want to mention a couple of other things. We're offering to put five screening trees here. And also one, two, three, four, five, six, seven screen trees here. These two sidelines had no buffering of any sort between this building and the residences here and also one that's just off the plan over here and then to this building down here at twenty-six. We're going to add some screening in here, which will again, kind of complete the picture, be more residential in nature and create some buffering as good names. Slide please. I want to review attention that the project meets all zoning requirements. This is the space and bulk requirements for the downtown residential district, the RA district. Uh, you can see that presently we have a service club use, uh, use. But, um, which is allowed. We're also proposing that we meet the boarding care facility definition of the ordinance. Uh, there is no recovery home per se listed in your ordinance, however, that that district does allow, quote, nursing and convalescent homes, concrete housing and boarding care facilities, whereas this recovery home is a form of all of that. If you look at the rest of the requirements in terms of spatial relations, the front setbacks, the side setbacks, the rear setbacks, building coverage, building height, we meet all the standards. In fact, everything is pretty much the same as existing, with the exception that we, uh, that front porch is seven feet closer to the street, but it is still sixty-eight feet back from the property line. And there's a ten foot setback there, so we're well, well beyond them. Slide please. And here's some elevations with the building will look like. We have four elevations from different directions and slide please. This is the first, the south elevation. I'm standing with my back to number twenty-six Oxford Street. Oxford Street is over here, so I'm looking at this side of the building. I can see the new ADA ramp with the entrance to the back of the building. Here's that front porch. We are keeping existing windows in this area. We're adding a couple of new ones in the back other side, but the building was supposed to be the same. I'll get some colors as well in a moment. Next slide please. This is the north elevation. I'm now standing on the other side of the building, looking back. Oxford Street's over here. There's that front entrance. There's the side entrance on the far side. These are existing windows to remain. And the building is the same shape, the same dimensions. Slide please. This is at the back of the building, if you ever walk behind where the where the slope is. We're adding some windows back there where there never were any to bring some light in there. There's the, uh, the ADA entrance on the right. There's the side entrance on the left. And slide please. And lastly, here's the east elevation. I'm standing in Oxford Street now, looking at the the building. This was where the the front door, the previous porch was about this big. This new porch will be longer, more residential in nature. And also notice the big porch portico with the the pitched roof going this way and also coming at you. Uh, lattice work underneath. This is all designed to make the building look more residential in nature, an appearance that's never had before. It's always been a a public race. For that nature. Slide please. And one more slide please. Here's a few more, uh, slides to show you what we planned for the building. Uh, this, what's important to the Wabnaki, uh, Wabnaki Nation is natural colors and appearances. Here are some of the buildings now that they have for the, for their program. This is the building on Plum Scott Avenue. Many have been with that building. Uh, this is the gathering place building that is in which top is. Rice Farm. Notice the use of the green roof, the brown colors, the natural colors. Down below here, we have some more traditional structures of the Wabnaki. We're trying to continue these colors and these patterns. So in the building up here, that's what's intended to be the lattice work underneath the porch, for example. We're going to use natural siding, not plastic siding, which is on the building now. We're going to paint the roof, the dark, the green that you see here over in this building now. When we're done, these photos are showing you the the context, the scale, and how we've reduced on the site by making the bill longer, a big white thing in the middle of it, but made it more like a residential, which it is. It's a recovery home. I'd like to, at this point, segue and ask Lisa to come up, speak to just what the use is. I expect her some some questions about what a recovery home is. Lisa, would you please explain what the purpose of home is and what the uses? Thank you.
Good evening, all. It's great to be back here. So essentially, this space is for families. We have a number of people in recovery services now. They're living in our homes and properties in Melanocat through partnerships as well as through our own ownership of those homes. What we know to be true is that for people to heal, they need to heal alongside their families. Their families need to get support. When we traveled across the nation and we talked to folks about what do people need to be well? In terms of that, you need a place for families. You need a place for families that are impacted by substance use disorder, but may not have substance use disorder that. That they need to come here and learn about how they can be the best family member and partner to those in their family that are struggling. So in this home, I can envision family members getting the supports they need and the teachings they need to support their loved one on the next part of their journey. So this home may hold many people that are not addicted themselves, but are impacted in their families with addiction. And also in this home will be tied to all of our professionals and our people who do substance use services every single day and can support these families in the next steps of their journey. So I can take any questions certainly about this particular recovery home. It is unique. I don't know how many are in the state of Maine, to be honest, for families. Heidi, you might have more information on that. But it's not being done enough, is what I know. What I know, whether it be the women that you serve, Heidi, or the individuals we serve, there's not enough places for people to be and to heal and receive the services needed. This is going to be one of those places. Thank you.
Uh, any questions or comments, Heidi, or Reddick?
Hi, um. I guess I just want to clarify one more time, um, the family recovery home. And, uh, those that will be eligible to go in. I know we talked a little bit last week, or when we actually last met, a couple of weeks ago. Um, but these are children and people that are involved with people that are in recovery houses in Melanocat. Now, are they also homeless themselves? And are we looking to try to create, um, a safe support network to get them housed, et cetera?
Yeah, I think, you know, what we've learned working with people in recovery is that people's housing situation is dynamic. It changes. Um, some folks are in more vulnerable situations than others. We're working on other projects here in Melanocat that we're looking at other housing as well. We need more housing for people. And we need housing that's healthy for people to be able to go in. And so in terms of this place, could we have people that are housing insecure? Certainly. Is that something that's universal? I doubt it. I think some folks will have their homes and some folks will need a place like this to be until that next transitionary period with their loved one that is seeking services.
Is there any time limit to these individuals being in the space?
Yeah, what we have learned as well delivering services is that time limits don't work. Healing doesn't work on some type of reimbursement schedule, even though that's how our systems work. That you can only get services until you meet a certain time of treatment. We don't believe in that. And yes, that means it's difficult in terms of funding. How do you seek those service, that funding that's needed that isn't paid by reimbursements? It's not easy, but we're doing it. We don't want to turn around, turn away anybody because they don't have insurance or because insurance says that you're supposed to be healed after a certain time. So timeline, I can't provide to you, only that we're going to be meeting people where they're at, no matter how long that takes us.
And you said there are going to be professionals in the building, working with these individuals as families um, and creating whatever goals they've got to be completed.
Yeah, absolutely. So in terms of the way we do our work, you develop a healing plan. You develop, what is that next step on your journey? What is that next step, the next twelve months, but not just twelve months? What are your dreams for the future? And what do we need to do as an organization to provide you every step of the way, that support and guidance that you need to be successful? So this is a, an opportunity to complete a continuum of care, where we're not just treating the person with addiction, we're treating the entire family. And if anyone knows about addiction, we know it's a family illness. It is certainly not an individual one.
And how many beds available?
Wow, that's a good question that I don't know the answer to. I once did. I don't tonight.
There are, uh, there are, uh, the main floor of the building is being rented. It has had eight bedrooms, individually closed bedrooms with with bed. There may be family members who join people in those rooms, but the intention is eight. Eight, eight bedrooms. And there may be family members who may join the treated folks, the community of folks. So that may be a different number. Uh, and then we believe that the staff would be a maximum of six. So the parking spaces of fifteen is based on that number. We, I also believe that not every person who is staying here, part of their family, would bring a vehicle. And so we feel that that's the appropriate number for staff, the accommodated, and then also the, uh, visitors. Thank you.
Okay.
Mister, yes, miss.
Do you have any plans for, okay, eight is a big building. But do you have plans for, as you grow, say you need twelve, so you need fifteen, are there any plans to to do anything about that contingency?
Yeah, I don't believe that growth would happen on property. What we have found that we outgrow our properties pretty quickly. And once we do that, we tend to find other places to provide whatever that next level or that added service is needed. So in terms of developing on that property, there's absolutely no plans of that. And that's not in our history in terms of how we add to our campus, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, can I speak, um? You you mentioned about family members joining individuals in this recovery process.
Yeah.
Will they be residing at this facility? They they will. Uh, and you mentioned that, uh, someone mentioned about, uh, there are eight parking places for eight rooms. Not everybody might have a vehicle. But is eight parking places going to be sufficient to get traffic or parking off? Yes, please.
Yeah, the the numbers that I'd like the board to focus on is there's fifteen parking spaces in the lot. That is, the recovery home is not a use to find any ordinance. And so we applied a, if you have a residential room, that's one parking space. If you have six staff. That is not necessarily the number of vehicles that lot will see. There may be people who will commute in other ways, or maybe people doesn't have that. So we feel that we have enough parking for that situation. That this is set up to be off-street parking to accommodate the full lot.
Yeah, I, uh, I looked at that section, uh, off three parking in the manual. And that boarding, uh, facility is the most expansive. If you look at something more of a, uh, nursing home, hospital facility, that's actually more forgiving on the parking. So I think we've been aggressive in addressing that need. I was just trying to see if this is going to be something that was going to be an ongoing issue for for the Webanaki organization. Uh, I don't think it'll much move into something to be an issue for the town, but it might. That's why I asked the question.
One thing the board made clear, Mr. Chair, is that, again, there's a finite number of rooms in this building. The building, the the floor is built out along with, uh, living room areas and counseling areas and a commercial kitchen. The building cannot accommodate any more housing units or bedrooms at this point. So this is the number we're coming for you. We have eight bedrooms. We know what our staff anticipates to be, and we feel that fifteen parking spaces will will make the need.
And as far as the size of these bedrooms, it was mentioned that individuals might be staying at somebody other than the individual being served in recovery. Uh, so, uh, is there going to be a, I wouldn't say a health issue, but obviously there are criteria to have the housing, uh, appropriate for the number of people residing. Please, uh, Reddick.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure of the question, but what I do know is that who will be staying there are people that are impacted by substance use disorder. Now, that could mean I am in Heidi's home, I'm seeking services. And I need my son and my husband and my mom to go through some difficult steps with me to understand perhaps my traumas, to understand why I'm addicted. And my family needs to understand that history and how they can support me in the future. So I could very much see myself staying in this home after leaving Heidi's and working with my family for that next step in recovery. So this is a home. This is a big kitchen where we sit down and have meals, hopefully every night, that it is operated like a family. And the people in that family could be personally impacted by substance use disorder themselves and could have somebody in their families with substance. themselves and could have somebody in their families with substance use disorder. So one or two of the folks could be in this home. Somebody who has substance use disorder perhaps, and then family that's supporting that person with substance use disorder. This is not the first home you go into, so I want to be really clear, that recovery is a continuum. That when you first go into recovery care, you may need detox. Detox is a high level of care that we are opening in Bangor. So we'll be offering that in another month or so. So you need that direct care that stabilizes you medically, it gets you off substances. And then what's your next step? Well, inpatient could be your next step. In-house, meaning you can't leave campus. That's not our programs. We work with programs across the state to be able to get our folks in that type of programming. Some people need that programming. After they're done that programming, they may come into an intensive outpatient setting, which is essentially what we offer here. Where people with substance use disorder are essential classes all day. They're learning all those skills that they need to keep them well. And that happens here already in Melanocat. After they learn those skills through intensive outpatient services, then a home like this is ready for them. They've had some sobriety recovery under them. They have learned some skills and, and knowledge that they need to be well. Then that's what they're doing here is that healing of the family. And so it's another step in the process, but it certainly isn't where you come when you're immediately in need. When you're first off substances, if you will. You've already been through many different phases of recovery and, and treatment before you land yourself in a family home. A family home is more of those things that you need to be able then to go back home. Like you're not here forever. You need to go back home. So to go back home, you need those skills with the family to be able to do that safely. And that's what will happen here. Is that more confusing?
No, it isn't. Can I follow up with a question?
Yeah, please.
You, you mentioned about, uh, detoxification, detoxification.
Yeah.
That would be in another location or this location or both?
Absolutely not. This is, no, this is located in Bangor, Maine. We have, so we're pretty intentional in terms of where we put our services. And we would never put a detox center right beside a family center. That just doesn't make sense for many clinical reasons. I'm not saying it's not done. It didn't make sense for us. Detox is in Bangor. That's where you go right in the beginning of your journey, if it's medically recommended. Not for all people do they need that. Many people do. That's offered in Bangor. It's a part of the continuum of services. So we can say at Wabanaki Public Health and Wellness, wherever you are in your journey, we have a place for you. So if you're actively in addiction, we need a place for you. And boy, do we have that now. And then if you're a little bit further along in your healing process, you may need your family around you. And we need that too. And that's what this is about.
Go, go ahead, Michelle.
I have a question and then something else that I don't know what it is yet. Um, you said there's a commercial kitchen.
There will be.
It will. Yeah, yeah, I'm, it already in my head. Um. Do you, staff would be cooking or families would be cooking? Three meals a day?
It could be, I think it could be either or. I mean, what we do in our recovery homes is we make, we make sure kitchens are full with the essentials, make sure people have what they need. So if my family's there, some living, you know, in Heidi's home, then yeah, there'll be stuff there that they can go and make a sandwich or have a glass of water or whatever they need. So the kitchen will be open.
My, my, uh, yes.
I have to add the grade in after my words, commercial kitchen. And what we've done, commercial grade dishwasher, for example, not something, so.
A restaurant wouldn't actually have them.
This is a higher level of care in the kitchen for durability, service, and ability to serve these meals. That way, it just is a home, but the kitchen, what we applied is a commercial grade of items there for durability.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I just also wanted to offer something about, um, families of people with substance, you, active substance, substance abuse disorder. And that is, in my experience, the many times, not always, many times the family is hurting more than the person who's actually got the problem. Um, you've been stolen from, you've been lied to, you have all these things going on the whole time they're using. And now they're getting help and you're not. Um, so you have to learn to live with them again. You have to go through all of the consequences of the you know, of what the family was. So, I mean, everybody's in treatment at that point, right? I mean, so that's the one thing. Um, the other thing was going the other way. I was in rehab for five years, because I'm slow. But, um, when I first went to, after my mother finally let me back in the house, I was like seven years sober and I went for Thanksgiving. And I was depressed because I could see that I was building my character and I was, I had changed everything. My family was just as, as, uh, uh, dysfunctional as they were when I left. And it wasn't because they were using, it was because they were used to being around me who was using. So I mean, it, it works both ways, but you have to get to a point where where you can deal with your family on a normal basis, some normal basis. So, I mean, I, I find that very important myself. I'm, I'm just kind of surprised that everybody do this yet. Although I'm sure they will.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, just one question we either, sort of. With the eight bedrooms that are there, sleeping capabilities for eight, do you envision any times that there would be more than one person sleeping in a bedroom, i.e. the family scenario if somebody comes? Um, and if so, what are the provisions for that? Just looking at the square footage of rooms and meeting the square footage requirements for more than one occupancy, so.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to speak to that. I can't speak to the requirements. What I can say is I could envision, um, a scenario where a child and their father or mother are in a, in a room together. Um, we certainly don't want to ever put individuals at risk and would not be um, in a situation where you would cram people into a, into a room. But I can envision a situation with more than one person.
Envision more like a rollaway cot at that point in time versus a temporary type of a piece.
That's right, how you would envision. And, you know, we're still working on, you know, what does that look like for the family? You know, are they here always? Or are they here Thursday through Sunday for certain services? Like, we're not really entirely sure. Um, but we do know that having the space for families to be here when their loved one is in care is important.
Do you envision, just from, I, I apologize for the technical questions tonight, but do you envision from a capacity perspective of putting a limit of how many would be in the building? And I'm more concerned with a sleeping perspective than I am during, during the day when it's, it's occupied. I mean, is there an envision as, um, there's only going to be X number of people sleeping in this facility at nighttime?
Absolutely. In any one of our recovery homes, we have this ideal number. And we don't go above that ideal number because we just don't have the capacity to be as present as we need to be with every individual that is with us. So I think about our recovery homes in Bangor. We know when we're at our limit, I think about our women's home. You know, when we're at number 10, we are creating a waitlist. Same thing with our men's recovery home in Bangor, that there is a waitlist because it just doesn't make sense. It's not, um, as healing when you don't have the freedom to move around and have privacy in your home.
Would, um, not to put everyone in a spot, any idea of what that number would look like, this facility?
I, I'm speaking off the top of my head. So I'm, uh, you know, I could say, you know, I can't imagine more than 16. I mean, I'm thinking about the room number, you know, um, but to give you a more thoughtful response, I would, I really would have to work with my team and, and see what that looks like.
Do you know what you have this facility at for capacity for bathrooms and room sizes and stuff?
We do, and, and Sean, I can't give you a number off the top of my head. I can tell you the number of bathroom fixtures there is substantially more than 16. So, so to speak, uh, the spaces, the common spaces, the hallways, etcetera, the the, the egregious distances to all doors was done to code, etcetera. Uh, you're aware, we did not need a Augusta Fire Marshal's permit for this project, but we applied the correct building standards, National Fire Protection Act standards. All the codes are consistent now in this building and correct. Uh, and so we feel that, 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 that the numbers we're talking about here, the building can accommodate substantially more than 16, if that was the number.
Yeah, I, I, that's my concern. I've, I've got a concern. I've got two concerns. Don't have enough parking, number one.
Don't have what?
Enough parking. 16 spots, if you've got eight residents there, and eight residents and six workers, that's 14 spaces. I know you say not everyone will have a car, but, um, we've been down that road before, other facilities around here that not everybody's gonna have a car, they, they get. So I think I'd like to have you look at more parking spaces. And my other concern is, as Sean brought up, with the number of people in the facility overnight. That's definitely can work through, from what you're telling me. The, the only thing I'm thinking of is, you know, you said, like, like maybe a lady's here recovering and her husband comes and her son comes and her mother comes and then we're talking a lot of, you know, we're talking a lot of people in, in, like, in that facility in one.
Would they have to park on that property?
Yes.
I mean, let's say you've got 20, 20 people with cars. Would they have to be parked there or could they go park at the wellness center or?
I did do the calculations for your green space that you have out front. And you do have additional footage to put eight additional parking spaces along your green space out front. If you need Tom, which could jump that number from 15 to, to eight more, so it could jump it from 15 to 23. If that's something the board chose to put as a condition on it, but they do have space for eight more out front there, based on the, the formula.
And, and I, I'm not, you know, I'm all, if you hear this, I, I, I've worked with you before, you know, when you do things, you do it right. But I'm just, that, that does concern.
I appreciate that. And if I could speak to the parking spaces. There, yes, there'll be six employees that are employed to work at this place. When will we have six employees there all at the same time? I can't even fathom that. So you will have, I will be working there. Okay, I'm not in recovery anymore. I'm working there. And I'm there Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And my shift is from 12 to 8 p.m. And that's when I'm there. And then somebody else takes ano- another shift. So people are not there, six people at one time. That, that never happens in our recovery homes and the other places that we have. We, we have somebody on site always and somebody who can be in contact at all times. But to see six employees at the same time at this facility, that would be surprising to me. Could we add more parking spaces? Absolutely. What we're trying to manage is the residential aspect of this with, you know, with having appropriate parking. I do believe in terms of all the work I've done and all the properties that we have across the state, that we have enough parking at this building. Um, however, flexible to address if we need to address, um, with more. In terms of spending the night, so if now I'm in recovery and my family comes, um, I, I hardly doubt I would be putting my husband in the same room as my mother. I think they'd get their own room, right? So there's another thing like, you know, another aspect of that that if I have a family that needs to be there for a certain amount of time to help me through a process, then we wouldn't necessarily put all that family in one room. We may have them have two rooms. So they can be comfortable that we are being safe, that we are not ever overcrowding individuals.
That, that helps me a lot with that, with that issue. Caring to say that, because if, if you knew you had that, then you would plan on not having all the rooms full. And, and the other issue with, with the parking, I was looking at four more parking spots, is what I was actually looking for. But how many staff are going to be there?
At one time?
At one time, at most.
At most, maybe three. Maybe three. I could see a group happening, some individual counseling happening. And then the regular person who's managing the home. Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
There will always be somebody there.
A staffing individual at our home, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, look, perfect. Thank you, I'm there.
Chairman.
Uh, let me go with Sean first and then there was a hand over here. Okay, go ahead first.
Sorry, um, so it is going to be 24 hours staffed?
Yeah, that's our plan, is to have, just like we do in Bangor, we have recovery managers, and that's our plan for this home as well.
Okay, second question, um, what are your rules around, uh, alcohol or medical marijuana?
It's not allowed on this property.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify for everybody.
Pretty aggressively, to be honest with you. We need to keep everyone safe. And if somebody is not ready for that stage in their recovery, then we have a different place for you, but it's not going to be on this.
I'm just wondering, uh, the people will be coming there will only be family? I mean, if, if somebody had a friend from another town, wanted to come up and visit this person because he's a good friend of his, can people just come and visit?
So this isn't about a visit. This isn't about just coming in to say hello. This is about healing. So people aren't just going to come and say hi and spend time with me. They're going to be in some intensive programming. So could that be a friend? I do not determine who somebody's family is. I have people in my family who are not biologically related to me and they're my family. So could they come here and be here for me? Absolutely. And is it just a visit? Not at all. You're in, you're in constructive programming during that time.
Thank you. Uh, in a situation like that, that, uh, was just, uh, I wouldn't say alluding to, but asking about, would that be some additional resident at the facility that would have to be accommodated to the space? Uh, Sean was asking about, uh, square footage of bedrooms and so forth. Uh, we don't deal with that in the zoning ordinance, but there are state regs that deal with that. Uh, so I'll, I'll divest to them. They, uh, they'll, they'll handle it. The state will handle it accordingly. But this is something that this facility would have to handle if someone came. Uh, I don't know how you would handle it. We're not going to get into particulars. But just that things happen that aren't expected. I guess that's the way to think about it. The unexpected happens. And, uh, we're gonna be able to accommodate people to actually be in residence at this facility uh, to help with this individual in recovery.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is, if you work in the area of health and healing and recovery, you have to anticipate the unexpected. Always. And the reality is, a lot of things are pretty expected. We know this field. We know what people need. And so absolutely difficult situations come up. They come up every single day. We're dealing with individuals that need attention. And people's lives are complex. And people are in need of a whole variety of medical and healing services. So that's the name of the game. You don't work in this field if you're not good with the unexpected. Or emergencies, or loss, or difficulty. You just aren't.
Thank you. Uh, any more questions? Oh, sorry.
I did, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, is there a team review, um? Would you envision it would impact your operation at all if either the planning board or the town through the permitting process were to cap your overnight occupancy at a, you know, a number of, um, uh, 18, 20, something in there? Would that impact your operation?
I don't see that impacting our operation is to have that number. We probably will be always operating in um, a more conservative way, keeping our people safe. That's just what we do. But a number, I'm not concerned with that.
The reason that I ask that is, uh, certainly.
Wonderful concept, wonderful philosophy. This same building, same facility, if it's not going to be a residential care facility, if we have to go through Fire Marshal's Office. This facility will be required to have a full sprinkler system within it. Um, I completely understand why the Marshal's Office and the state have done what they have done. And do not require that process for that, but that would be my concern from code enforcement is that. We already know we have a facility that's not going to be fully sprinkled, does not need to be fully sprinkled. But if you reduce or have a known number of light hazards in there in the after hours, sleeping. It's, it's significantly going to impact the emergency responders that are coming and the response that everybody can give for care to your folks. So that's why I ask.
We're not opposed to keeping our people safe. We're actually good partners in that.
Thank you, Oiler. Any?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I have a question for you, Sean. So if, if you're talking about adults and children. And a number, would a baby be more than one person, less than one person?
No.
Just a regular, same as an adult?
But if you were to apply the life safety code standards to it, it wouldn't matter. Um, whether it was an elderly, a middle-aged person or an, uh, an, an individual listening.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Not to cut anybody off, but I just don't want to, uh, leave anybody hanging. But I, there are some members of the public here. I want to see if, uh, they have questions or comments.
No, I just. As Sean will stand, we're talking about my safety code, we're talking about numbers. And I am fully. Behind this. I know we can work with them. I've worked with them before on other projects. And, you know, we can, we can come up with numbers afterwards. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, any? Jack, from, from your part or, uh, Tom or Lisa from your part, any more comments?
So Chair, I'll just comment as an overall summary. I want to just remind the board and the public that the project does meet zoning use requirements.
Yeah.
I think you've seen that the Wamnaki Public Health and Wellness have made offers to mitigate the impacts since the neighborhood, we're aware of that. And that this would be a great addition to the neighborhood and improvement to the town and to the services near it. And that's our summary. But thank you for your time and your attention. We look forward to the public hearing.
Two individuals, I assume, from the public that have been notified of this meeting.
Yes, sir.
Uh, do you wish to speak, make a comment, ask questions? Please come up, identify yourself and your address, please, and, uh.
I'm not too say, I'm getting old. Uh, my name's Brian Lawrence and I live at twenty-six August Street right next to this facility. And I want to tell you, I'm fully in favor of it. I spent thirteen years as the jail administrator down in Lincoln County. And we had programs and we used the, uh, uh, Diction Resource Center out of Bath. And if I'd only had a place like this, it would have been so much easier. I used, uh, those folks, I used my furlough ability to regulate what the inmates did. But I want to tell you that we went in and we had to do the marriage counseling. We had to do the parenting. We had to do the anger management. We had to teach people how to do their books and all over again. But the outcome is, cutting that short, is this.
We took this functional family. Came off the welfare roll. They became a family. The children went from marginal. To great parts. If we'd had a place like this. With this machismo for me. I'm sorry.
And we had, uh, S M R T also, uh, designed our new Lincoln County Sagatohak jail. And they did an excellent job there and you're doing an excellent job of it too. Living in the neighborhood right next to that facility, I can tell you when I came down and visited, I was excited. I brought my wife to see it. Uh, that'd be a great addition to our neighborhood. Uh, but these folks are doing what's right. I can tell you from experience that it worked. I can tell you to put the families together, it is so heartwarming and so wonderful. We've taken people who have been heroin addicts, everything, and. We get them onto the program. Again, we used the Diction Resource Center. So they followed up. Once we got them out of the jail and they were done, they continued with that program for them. These folks, uh, have their own system that way. But it does work and it is vitally important. That you get the families back together because if I was a drunk for twenty years and all of a sudden I come home into the house with my wife. And I want to start making decisions, she's going to say, who are you? I run this place. And she does anyway, but anyways. That's what she goes through. And the children, who is this guy? Or who is this woman? And it really, really takes a lot of work with the families back together again. And, but it worked. We've seen it. We've seen the, the people come off the welfare rolls, the jails. Back then, it's a lot more now. Back then it was thirty thousand dollars a year to house the person for a year. These inmates at an average of four times a year returning, it was expensive. Guess what? Society didn't have to pay for that anymore. They, they got off the general assistance. They got off all this other stuff and became functional families. That's what we want in Melanocket. We want functional families. We don't want people on the welfare rolls. We don't want people having trouble. These folks are doing what's right. They're really doing what's right. And what's going to be on that picture there, we such a great addition to our town and to our neighborhood. So I'd just like to tell you that I guess we're the only ones that, they cared enough to come, but. I have the experience that these folks are talking about and I can tell you it worked.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence. Any follow-up questions or just follow-up comments or questions? Yes, Michelle. Uh, excuse me.
Oh. Hey, wait. Um, I just want to recuse myself on this because we will be taking advantage of the opportunity. With breaking the cycle to hopefully have some of the families of the residents that are in my house. But I will tell you historically, we've had to have families come up with monies for motels. To come up to see their loved ones that are here repeatedly. To have children drive so many hours to try to only see mom for a couple and then go back or a couple of days at our house. And then have to return. Um, and there are other, other, there are other solutions here that are. Uh, more cost effective, I think, and more preserving of that family nucleus. Uh, which is where Wabanaki Public Health is going, where we're going as an organization, caring with them. So. Um, I'm going to recuse myself, but I'm fully on board with this next step. Uh, as we continue to unroll our, uh, developing of housing for individuals that have completed our program. And are becoming viable citizens of this community and becoming your workforce. Um, so I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, any other comments, questions from members of the board? Yes.
First, I want to say, thank you, our first. I also want to say that Heidi, we're seeing the effects of your work. We're hiring your people. They're amazing workers when they're ready. You know, sometimes people need to focus on themselves before they contribute to community. And what we're finding is that people are so dedicated to contribute to community once they're well. So this is about the workforce in Melanocket. And Heidi, I will say, we're also looking at other housing opportunities for people who are working with Wabanaki Public Health and Wellness. And people who are coming out of recovery for them to be able to call Melanocket home. You want these people to call Melanocket home. They are amazingly strong and committed once they're well. So just thank you. Thank you to our neighbor and thank you to all of you. Because this is a partnership. This is about healing. A greater community and not just the people who might be directly in our services. So just cheekily one big thank. I'll stop there.
Thank you.
Any other?
If I'm not mistaken, there are several of them running, uh, working in Hannaford too.
Yes, right.
They're running the place?
If, uh. If there are no other questions or comments. What I want to do is move on to section one twenty-five, one eleven, dealing with the criteria for a site plan review. I want to go through each, uh, item and, uh, we won't vote on each item. It gets a little bit. Labor intensive, but obviously there will be an opportunity to say, I don't go with that. I don't agree with that. And please do just speak up. We'll note it in the minutes. And then we'll vote on the facility in its, in, in its entirety with all the criteria being considered. Understood?
Yeah.
All right, very good. I'll start with the, uh, obviously the first one. Adequate provision has been made for off-street parking and loading. We discussed this. Uh, there are fifteen places identified on the plot plan. Uh, there was indication, uh, that, uh, eight more spaces could be accommodated. In proximity or, uh, adjacent to the green area, the lawn area. Uh, that's going to be created because part of the block top is going to be removed. Tom was mentoring civilians to step in for some, using your information. You indicated that, uh, there might be a way of, uh, accommodating two more parking places. On both sides of the fifteen places that are now identified. Uh, I'm just laying out what the adequate parking provision is, uh. Requiring, but essentially as far as the requirement, uh, the requirement is met, just anticipation. That there might need to be more. Any other comments or questions or? No, I'm going to move on to the next one. Adequate provision has been made for traffic movement of all types, including pedestrian into, out of, and within. The proposed project, the board shall consider traffic movement both onsite and offsite, making this determination under this criteria. This facility operated as a fraternity hall. Hall, the parking was well in excess, I'm sure. I never counted them up in excess of fifteen places. I don't think we're going to have an issue dealing with traffic movement on or off the facility. Uh, that's my opinion. I'm only one of seven.
I will point out that I used to go to a lot of, um, dish fries over there. And I wasn't the only one. I'm not sure where everyone parked, but there were a lot of people there. And I assume many of them drove. So, you know, I know there's enough room.
All right, I think that, that, uh, criteria essentially is not going to be, uh, uh, a negative. Issue with this facility. I think the facility meets that criteria. I'm going to move on. Any traffic increase, uh, attributable, uh, to the proposed project will not result in unreasonable congestion or unsafe condition. On the road in the vicinity of proposed development. Again, fifteen parking places, even if it goes to twenty-three, I don't think we're talking about congestion per se. That's my opinion. Anybody see an issue? I'm going to move on. D, the proposed project will be built on soil types. Let me stop right there. This is not a greenfield facility.
Right.
Uh, soil types are what they are. The building is there. The footprint isn't changing. The area is already developed. As far as I'm concerned, that is not applicable. Going to move on. E, adequate provision has been made to locate and design proposed outdoor display and storage areas. Uh, so as to avoid any safety hazards, vehicle or pedestrian traffic, et cetera, et cetera. There is no outdoor display or storage areas. This is going to be a residential setting.
Right.
Not applicable. I'm going to move on. Adequate provision has been made to avoid any hazard to travel on public and private ways or any flare or other nuisance. Uh, to the use of adjoining public or private property. Uh, let me ask that in context of this question. I don't remember seeing any outdoor. Illumination in the parking area, things of that nature. Is that anticipated? All right, as far as I'm concerned, as far as that, uh, issue, it's not an issue relative to this project, this development. Okay, I'll move on. Adequate provision has been made with regard to buffer screening, landscaping, and the preservation of. An enhancement of significant natural features. I don't know about the natural features. There's a big hill behind this building. That's one natural feature. I don't think of any. Infringement on the environment per se. Like I said, the footprint of this building has not changed.
Yeah, actually, it seems like it's an improvement.
Been improved.
Yeah, and there will be buffer strip, buffer trees on the north and south side. There will be this island effect along the. East side of the property between Oxford Street and the parking area. I think that's going to be a, uh, aesthetically improved, uh. Aesthetic improvement to the, uh, facility and the neighborhood. Any other? I'm going to move on. Adequate provision has been made to avoid unreasonable adverse effects on the scenic and natural beauty of the area. Uh, it goes on and on and on in that regard. Let me just make, make mention of other aspects of that, uh, criteria. Uh, takes, uh, effect upon existing uses. Obviously, it's a residential area. Effects upon air quality. There's nothing emanating from this facility that isn't coming from other residences. It's not a manufacturing facility. Water quality or other natural resources within the town or in neighboring towns. Uh, I don't see an adverse impact from this facility i- in that regard. This is either not affected or not applicable. That's my opinion. I'm going to move on. Whenever, uh, whenever a project is situated in whole or in part, within two hundred and fifty feet. Okay, it's dealing with water. There's no water within two hundred and fifty feet of this facility. Not applicable. I'm going to move on. Adequate provision has been made to prevent any significant adverse effect upon the public health, safety or general welfare of the neighborhood or community. Actually, I see the opposite happening with this facility. And I don't think there'll be any physical change to the, to the neighborhood that would be adverse. I think this is going to be an improvement. That's my editorial comment.
Agreed.
I'm going to move on. Adequate provision has been made to prevent any undue adverse effect upon the property values of adjacent or nearby properties. Again, it's applicable. I think this is going to improve anything. If not, it'll be benign. There won't be any negative or positive effect, but I think it's going to be an improvement. Well, okay. Adequate provision has been made to ensure the proper operation of the proposed business or activity on site. Through the provision of adequate and appropriate utilities, drainage, water supply, storage disposal, waste disposal. Access, parking, loading and other necessary, uh, site improvements. These are all physical, uh, attributes to the facility. I don't see anything negative. Uh, but obviously, uh, there will be, uh, a business environment here in the sense of professional staff and so forth. But I don't see any, any issues there. There'll be staff in attendance and there'll be individuals served and recovered. Any comments? I'm going to move on. Adequate provision has been made to assure that the proposed development conforms to all, in all respects. With the provision of this part two. This part two is zoning. This part two is zoning ordinance and, uh, what it makes reference to in that criteria is, uh, section eight, uh, land use regulation. Uh, we can go through each one of them. Uh, I did so just to see, uh, anything that might jump out at me that I said, I didn't think about that. But there was nothing that I saw, but we can go through each of those. I don't. Well, we can go through each of them.
We'll be out of here by ten.
Uh, the last thing is the application, the, excuse me, the applicant has adequate technical and financial capacity, capability to carry out the project as proposed and to meet any conditions of approval applied by the planning board. This criteria really, uh, is applicable to a greenfield arrangement. And this, this site plan application is really, uh, a re- renovation of an existing building and nothing is changing per se, but, uh, I don't know about financial capability and I would look for some, uh, well, import from any of the, uh, board members or, uh, from the code enforcement officer, but I don't see that we need to get some document from a bank or so forth that says that this, uh, project can be carried through to completion. Because essentially the facility is here. It's just going to be renovated. Michelle?
I was just going to say, I'm not telling tales out of school because I don't know any. But I certainly remember numerous times reading that the Wabanaki had been awarded a grant for more than a million dollars over and over and over. So I have, um, I have some pretty good confidence in they've got a, they've got grant writers. And I know that recovery is a thing now because everybody knows somebody. So, I mean, I wouldn't worry about that at all.
Uh, I'm worried about it, but not to the concern of saying, we've really got to see something in writing. Because the, the, the changes that are going to occur are mostly internal. It was made mentioned about the exterior being changed, uh, from a siding that it now has to something that's uh, wood, I believe, things of that. Then the, the porch area being expanded. I, I don't see a, a need for documentation from a financial institution for this project because it's, it's already built.
I, I, yeah, I think that's a moot point because we've seen the other projects have gotten it. There's never been any issue with that.
Well, thank goodness, there's issues there. It would be bad for the town if we left with a half head, half building, Heidi.
I think everybody, most anybody has seen both the Healy Lodge and, um, the Rice Farm Road gathering place. And they are, they're adequate. They are spectacular. So I think their reputation speaks for themselves with buildings that they've been.
Well, like I said, a lot of this has got to be internal. If everything was internal and this was private residence, nothing would come before the planning board. This is just a much bigger facility, but essentially it's most of the time. Those are the items in the criteria. And, uh, what we need now is, and again, I'm sorry, Avram.
I've just raised my motion.
Oh, I was going to say is, motion is needed to, uh, approve the, uh, site plan application as we reviewed. And there's been a motion or will there be a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. I go forward.
Go ahead.
Okay. Chairman, from a town code enforcement and life safety perspective, there are, there are two conditions that I would respectfully ask that the planning board put on this project. Um, I have had the opportunity to speak with their architect design team already and I don't feel any issue. Um, the first one would be is that the additional four car spaces are added to go from fifteen to nineteen. Um, and the second is, and we did actually find a state statute that will limit the number per room. But I think it's important that it makes it in there that occupancy, excuse me, overnight occupancy is limited to two occupants per bedroom.
So that's a total of sixteen.
That, that would be the.
It'll be stated two occupants.
I, I would, I would much rather suggest that we worded as two occupants per bedroom rather than put a number. An overall number, I think, better off that way. Those would be the two recommendations that town staff would ask the planning board to consider this project. And I, I don't want to speak.
John, John.
Yes.
Is that the state requirement or is that below the state requirement?
That the two per bedroom meets the state requirement. It's the state requirement of, um, twenty five MRSA, which is a main revised statutes annotated, twenty four fifty two subsection four, which is specifically the exemption that recovery homes are allowed to utilize to not have to go down the road of full sprinkler systems, full review by the fire marshal's office. One of the limitations is that whether the board does it or not, our office would do it, but it's to cap it at two per.
And so it's literally in each bedroom or if I have, if I'm in there and I have four children, can I do that if the guy next to me has one and that guy down the?
No, you could only have two occupants per bedroom.
Let me ask Lisa, does that fit what you need?
I, you know, Michelle, it's, it is limiting. I will say when I think about our women's recovery home, we certainly have more than two people in the room. We, we have a beautiful home which holds four people in each room and it completely is within life and safety. So yes, could we do that? Absolutely. And with, without knowing the square footage of every bedroom on the top of my head, I can't say, does that make sense and is it consistent with our other homes that we manage? So can we live with that restriction? Absolutely. We never want people at risk. And I do know in other homes that we manage, we have more than two people in a room. And that's met all, um, residents, it's met all requirements in terms of recovery homes. So yes, we can do that and it is different.
Lisa, do you know if in those other homes, if there's sprinkler buildings? Are they not?
They are not.
You're familiar with the saturate, yeah. So I'll let you share with your, your. I will.
I'll be brief, Sean. Thank you. Um, we have previously submitted to Sean, it's just last meeting three weeks ago. The exemption from the state listed on that piece of document says a limit of two per bedroom. So, uh, we have provided information on that already. It was my oversight. I didn't bring that up early in our conversation. Thank you. Also to the parking spaces, uh, we left space there because we're trying to limit the spaces. We can meet the additional four spaces and meet your requirements for parking and geometry. And I'm satisfied that's still a safe design.
How long would that take?
I can provide a revised drawing for Sean promptly. So if that was a condition of approval, I could provide a final, final drawing of the conditions with the conditions stayed as well.
I'm still trying to wrap my head around, um, two people per room. I'm, I'm having a kind of a hard time. I know when I stay at motels, when I had my grandson or whatever, we, I guess we overstayed, I don't know, in the state of Maine in hotels, um.
I'd be happy to speak more in depth, Cheryl, if you'd like. So in the, in the state of Maine, as I explained a little while ago, if this project were moving forward as a hotel or a motel or, uh, bed and breakfast in this year, twenty twenty three, this facility would be required to have a full functioning sprinkler system. Okay. The state of Maine recognized a number of years ago that recovery homes are critical need and necessity in the state of Maine. In that there was a push to get more of them. And in that push to get more of them, they enacted legislature that basically said, we will lower the standards, the life safety code standards to allow more of these homes, uh, recovery centers. But in the process of doing that, they put some additional restrictions in there, right? So they said, putting sprinkler systems in all these buildings would, was just cost, um, ineffective, um, for the homes. So they've said, you can do it without having a sprinkler system in the residence, but the restrictions are. And so it's not even a me piece. It's the, the main legislature, the main laws say two per bedroom. If they chose to sprinkler the building, then they don't need to use this exemption and then they would fall just like a hotel motel bed and breakfast would. And they could have more folks occupy those rooms. It's kind of a give and take if that makes any sense.
So was I violating state law where my husband, my nephew, my grandson and I stayed in one hotel room?
Absolutely not. Nope. Nope.
Sprinklers. Okay. Thank you. Got it. Got it. It just seems to me like if you're talking about the family, that could be two people or it could be seventeen people, which I'm not really advocating, but it just seems like two is awfully.
And, and if it makes it challenging, that particular issue for the planning board to have that as be a contingency on there, it's really a mute point because at the end of the day, even if the planning board does not put that on as a condition of the approval, um, my office and the life safety officer are going to require that before you get a certificate of occupancy. I was just trying to make it smoother for everybody is what I was attempting.
And which Sean just explained, essentially, we do not deal with criteria of life safety code. We just make reference to it. Uh, and as far as us saying, no, you don't have to meet that obligation. It's not on our purview to do that.
Okay.
I hope that.
Uh, this question did not come up, uh, the board, but I'd like to just consider, one thing you should know is that this building has a full, I use the word again, commercial grade fire alarm system. There's an enunciator in every single room. There are manual pull boxes at the exit doors. There are smoke detectors. These are all far beyond what you expect to find in a residence to begin with. But we're providing these commercial grade systems in the building. The only thing that is missing from here is the sprinkler that Sean mentioned. This is the equivalent of a commercial housing or, or motel like environment. I could use that word, but again, this is a residence. I with the exemption, but I want to bring attention to the board that there's substantial infrastructure in this building already that's well beyond what's in most people's houses.
Did you say enunciating? It's.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
There was reference to, uh, an additional four parking places being added to the, uh, project plan. Uh, we're not going to see anything tonight. I don't expect it and it's not necessary. Code enforcement officer will be dealing with that. And the other thing was the, uh, Greg, have my memory, which is pretty good.
Mr. Chair, I apologize for interrupting again. I'll be able to mark four, four, four spaces on that plan right now and show the board.
Well, you, you can certainly do that and that would probably, uh, put it in writing, but as far as, uh, the requirement from fifteen to nineteen parking places, uh, that would be, I want to have a vote on that. And the other issue that was addressed, uh, concerning. Uh, do you think my memory? Yes, two, two, two people per room as, as far as following the life safety code. That doesn't have to be in the, uh, in the motion, but I need a motion dealing with these two issues. In the same motion, voted individually, but I need a motion addressing those two issues. And then we'll address the criteria that we reviewed, one twenty five, one eleven.
And.
No, he was going to make a motion. Sean, go first. Okay.
I, I, I just, I'm, I'm lost here. Um, if life safety and the CEO are going to work on the thing that's not a purpose, right? The occupancy and the, and the parking, why do we need to mention it at all?
Uh, the, the parking is mentioned in the criteria. And as far as the occupancy, uh, you know, you're right, the life safety code would make reference to it, but we don't enforce anything in that regard.
That was my concern is why are we doing that? We're going to make a promise us and then we can't do anything.
Uh, we, we, we can amend this proposal.
Right. But my point is, if it's not our business, why are we going to, why were we included?
Okay.
Easily deal with the parking issue because that is.
That is the criteria.
The other one, if we're chose not to, again, it's kind of your point, but I, I wanted in transparency for the board to be aware of that.
Okay.
All right. Then a motion then to indicate that the, uh, parking will be increased from fifteen places to nineteen.
So move.
Okay. A motion by Malcolm, uh, Tom, and second by Avram. Any discussion on the motion? None? Those in favor? Anybody opposed? Don't move. Oh, 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 Heidi, you abstained?
Yes.
Okay. What abstention? We have the criteria in, uh, one twenty five, one eleven. And we reviewed them and I'd like to deal with a, a motion to accept the, uh, review of those criteria as, uh, the project being in agreement or compliant. And a second to that motion?
Second.
Who made the motion?
Michelle.
Michelle. Tom made the second. Any discussion on the motion? None? Those in favor? Anybody opposed? No opposition? Heidi abstained. Any other comments? I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A motion by Tom, second by John. Anybody opposed to adjourning?
No, no.
Yes.
Vote, vote.
All right. So move. Thank you very much.
Thank you.